Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. For tonight's work session, Public Works Director Kyle Cornelis will present an update on current construction projects and the status of projects that are ongoing to give you a sense of where we're at with projects that have been previously funded through the capital budget. And then we'll be presenting and discussing a document that's in the agenda packet, which is a draft of an updated five-year CIP. So within that draft, we've identified projects that were existing on the five-year CIP when the council adopted it last year, as well as some modified and proposed new projects. And through the work session, Public Works Director Cornelis will be able to speak to all of these projects, as well as the process and how we solicit recommendations from the department heads, the boards and commissions, and how we kind of go about updating this document. But if you'll recall, it's a document that we update annually, and it identifies for budgeting purposes and for planning purposes, expected capital outlay over the next five years. And with that, I will turn it over to Kyle.
Thank you, Manager Queen. As City Manager Queen noted, to begin things, I will give a brief update on some existing capital projects and their statuses. That was the sheet that I just handed out. I was hoping to get that accomplished earlier in the week and get it distributed, but it's literally hot off the press, so I just sort of made updates and issued it and provided a copy to the clerk. After I go over those existing capital projects and their statuses, I will talk a bit about the five-year CIP, the administrative processes that we go through to establish that, go through the draft CIP that's proposed via Resolution 2021-032. Throughout the process, happy to answer any questions informally. I know it's a work session. And I'm coming through loud and clear? Okay. Perfect. Before we get started, does anybody have any questions for me about anything at all? Okay. So the memorandum that I handed out with the select list of current CDS Aldatna projects, these are projects that are ongoing or recently completed, doesn't perfectly correlate with the five-year CIP. Some of these projects were mid-year appropriations, some of them were identified and funded through the CARES Act, some of them were funded through our operating budgets. There are existing projects that were either recently completed or were working on currently. So probably the easiest way for me to do this is to kind of go through each one, and if folks have any questions, I'll just zip through them nice and quick. Feel free to interrupt me and let me know. The first one is a cold storage conversion of their wastewater treatment plant. Pretty simple project where we created a heated space that cold storage building houses our standby generators for lift stations. So in the past, they've been plugged in in the cold. Now they're in a heated facility ready to deploy whenever there's a power outage, such as I want to say last holiday. On the holiday, the Fourth of July, there was a power outage for multiple hours, and we had an operator that had to come in and deploy a standby generator to make sure that our wastewater continued to flow because gravity does not cease when power outages do. Well, E ChlorTech upgrade, this is a fun project we were able to accomplish through the CARES Act. This allowed us to replace the disinfection equipment at wellhouse E. It allows us to have ample supply of disinfectant for citywide use. This was a, we used this facility during the height of COVID to provide bleach solution to the police, to Parks and Rec, to all of our city departments. It's a pretty nifty piece of equipment. It uses saltwater and electricity to create bleach sodium hypochlorite. So we just recently completed that, and it is integrated with our SCADA system. So it's, it's a fun project for Public Works. The next one is downtown beautification project. You may have seen the work that was underway in front of the trustworthy hardware building as well as AK Wildgear. You can see the hydroseeds growing now, and that simply was a part of our beautification project, ongoing beautification project where we installed some trees and the landscape concrete buffer essentially will create a space between the landscape improvements and the parking lot. Runway 725 rehabilitation, this is a fairly large project for the CDS Aldatna in terms of magnitude for our projects. It's a $7 million grant. 6.18 million was the contract amount. Good opportunity here for me to point out that some of these projects are, they identify that either the design or construction phase, or they're just a project, and there can be a lot of different, a lot of different phases and contractual work associated with each project. For example, downtown beautification, you know, there's tree procurement, there's solicitation for the concrete work, et cetera. So the runway project is underway. If you go down Funny River Road, you'll notice a lot of earth being moved. The objective of that project is to flatten the runway. It currently has a vertical curve or a crest in it so that there's some site inhibition from aircraft on either end. It's great timing because the asphalt was in need of replacement, so we'll have the opportunity to have all-new asphalt, reconstruct the taxiway approaches, all-new edge lighting, which will effectively have, replace all of our old edge lighting, so we'll have all-new LED technology at the airport, and then, of course, striping and painting and such. Airport is still in operation. The taxway B, which is the parallel taxway, is our temporary runway, so very limited impact to our airport users during the, during this phase, with the exception of some of the much larger aircraft that need the full 5,000 feet. So there's, there may, there was a few of our users, particularly jet users, that were needing to use Keen Eye this summer. We did communicate with all the folks that we knew were repeat customers. IT improvements, this is a, this was a project where we contracted with an acreage firm to do an analysis and perform some radiation tasks, work on the VLAN 1, the DMZ network, our backup hardware, working on some machine isolation and furthering some additional assessments for our IT infrastructure. That work is ongoing. Next page is lover's lane curb and street repair. Street projects are fun, too. This was, this was, this area of the street took a lot of our maintenance crew's time this winter and spring. We had a ever-enlarging pothole and drainage issues. This project replaced damaged curb and asphalt, and you'll notice the patch if you're in that nick of the woods. That's a good example of a reactive project where, you know, not something that we had pre-planned on a five-year CIP or a planning document, but it was created and addressed accordingly. The Memorial Park Phase 2 expansion, this is the expansion to the north at our cemetery. We are, we had a construction meeting today, just confirming its readiness for hydroseed. So it's nearly, nearly complete, includes a lot of irrigation for future maintenance, and I want to say there is about 388 additional new plots incorporated into this area. I may want to call on Clerk Sanner, who was, played a role in the programming.
Thank you. We are anticipating about 50 years from this expansion, and it'll be opened a portion at a time.
Kyle, the only thing I wanted to add is that as part of this project, we actually achieved the veterans' area expansion last fall. So that was part of this project, but we were able to get that in, in use earlier at the end of last year, and this is the additional other expansion.
Yep, that's, that's correct. And it did give us an opportunity also to revisit the overall master plan, if you will, for that, for that entire parcel, 17 and change acre parcel.
On that, I heard from a number of neighbors in the area when there was construction underway and between the project by the high school and the memorial park, they had it coming at them from all sides. So I'm sure they will be glad when this is done. It will be, that part at least will be quieter.
Yes. And on that topic, not unlike most of our city properties, the cemetery has its share of beetle kill and problem trees, and that's something that we're keeping an eye on as well, so. City Hall Automatic Transfer Switch, this is a project where we encountered supply chain issues like many have in regards to shipping and availability for manufacturers and vendors. We actually ordered the equipment, I think, in April, and I think we just received it recently, and so our contractor will be installing that automatic transfer switch once we're able to coordinate with Homer Electric Association and the temporary shutdown of this building for the installation. Probably a two-hour, this is news to Stephanie, but probably about two hours of downtime at City Hall, so we will strive to do that, we will strive to do that after hours. But that will allow us, obviously, for service interruptions at the building to continue in operation, but most importantly, you know, our IT backbone is run out of the basement of City Hall, and so not a big issue during working hours where we can start the generator, but after hours, depending on the duration of the outage, it could have serious implications on our IT infrastructure with backups and voice-over IP phones and communications, not just in my world with SCADA and utility stuff, but also the police department, et cetera. Aspen Acres Parking Lot Feasibility, this is a fun project. For many years, we've identified a need for improved downtown parking and event parking. This conceptual project would take a look at an existing gravel parking lot downtown, work with the property owners to develop an agreement that would allow the city to improve that and make it available for our community, our community's use. So the project at this point is really a conceptual or preliminary design where we did some due diligence with geotechnical investigation to make sure that it was actually feasible, and then some conceptual level planning on what a parking lot might look like and might cost.
Where is Aspen Acres?
Aspen Acres, Aspen, Aspen Acres is a project title that we assigned to it, but the gravel parking lot in front of the Aspen Hotel, adjacent to Arby's, is, we currently have, we hold certificates of insurance. Correct, yes. We do make that available to, to folks for our busy event days, and we provide the property owner insurance paperwork, much like we do other properties in downtown, to try to address the parking situation. And so this conceptual project would more, would formalize a relationship with the property owner and potentially make improvements to it.
Just a follow-up question on that. So the dividing line between the existing kind of gravel lot that's below and adjacent to Salatna Creek Park, there's kind of like a really steep embankment, embankment that's brushed over between that and the upper gravel lot they're looking at with Aspen Acres. So would there be any work to provide, you know, increased walkability between those sections where people don't have to kind of like circle around the highway or kind of bushwhack through that little section and drop down to get to the park?
Thank you. That's a good question, Councilmember Chilson, potentially. You know, I think that we're in such early phase here of investigations that that's one of the, one of the, one of the objectives is to, is to look at the pedestrian movement. So potentially, I think that's an important aspect of, particularly for the event parking, not just downtown parking, but for the event parking, they would be parking there and walking to Salatna Creek Park. So that route is something we would need to take a look at, and ownership and safety and improvements and things like that.
And then if I may, further expanding on that, my understanding is we had a five-year agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, basically tying our hands where we couldn't touch that lot adjacent to the park, and I believe that since expired. Is there any way that we can roll that lot into this study and then figure out some kind of way to develop that and expand parking or expand the park into that, or just make use of that beyond just having an empty gravel lot?
Certainly, certainly an option. That lower lot has its fair share of challenges, as you know, and also, you know, end-use planning is a big, a big issue with that. I don't know, Stephanie, do you want to expand on that at all?
I was just going to recognize that you're correct that it has expired. The five-year plan had identified trying to find expanded downtown parking. Really, our efforts have been focused on on-street parking, looking at partnerships with existing private parcels. I think other than making some very slight improvements a couple of years ago to that parcel, we hadn't been focused on, on programming that, but if the council was interested in having us look at something more permanent for that property, I would think bringing a kind of resolution or motion forward would direct our efforts in that, in that vein.
I will be in touch.
Okay. Any other questions on, thus far? The next one is super exciting for me, wastewater treatment plant bio-solids de-watering. This is a project that I think you guys have seen through the funding, the initial funding for the Phase 1 of the design portion. This is our de-watering system at the wastewater treatment plant. Currently, we were using a belt press that's antiquated, and we can't get parts from the manufacturer anymore. So we are currently under design with a consultant. Phase 1, it will identify the particular technology that will be best suited for our use, because there are different technologies out there, and it depends on our, we'll likely send samples of our sludge to manufacturers for their analysis and commitment to a certain dryness. Once we identify the particular technology and equipment that is best suited for us, we will need to come back before council and request additional funding for Phase 2, which would be design, final design, to include bid-ready documents and construction funding. So Phase 1 will wrap up with a, an engineering cost estimate based on the particular equipment that we select. Centennial Park Shower Trailer Installation Design, this is a, this is kind of the end, the end of our CARES Act work. We purchased this shower and restroom trailer to kind of enhance sanitation at different areas. The intent is to install it at Centennial Park. In order to do so, there's quite a bit of design and planning that's required. It'll need a fairly robust, fairly robust foundation, leach field of adequate size. We'll need to make sure that the existing wellhouse can supply the necessary water, and then there's 200 amp electrical service and things of that nature that we'll need to make sure we do it right. So it's a solicitation for professional services that's pending on my desk, actually, currently. On the next page, we've got the Aldatna Regional Sports Complex Major Maintenance and Renovation Project. This is a topic of discussion, and you'll, we'll touch on it probably later today when we get into the five-year CIP and capital budget. This is the $1.5 million project that was appropriated by ordinance 2020-019. This is the renovation of the, of the sports center, not the conference room area. If you remember, in the near past, we engaged a consultant to assist us with the analysis of the sports center and ways to improve its customer service perspective, as well as renovations and upgrades to, you know, 33-year-old old buildings. So there's really two objectives here. One, repair and fix antiquated parts of the building and code deficiencies, and then also improve it for customer service. Currently, that building is the headquarters for our Parks and Rec Department, so if you want to rent a pavilion, or you want to go ice skating, or you want to talk about the dog park, it's not very customer-friendly, and so the improvements that we have designed try to meet those objectives. You'll note in the status here, the construction cost estimate came back significantly higher than our budgeted amount. When this occurred, we, we delayed our bid, bid window. I believe we informally notified council of our intent to postpone bidding for a number of different reasons. The, the timeframe was not to our best advantage, the availability of contractors was not to our best advantage, the supply chain issues are also causing challenges, and then also the construction period of performance with billing occupancy was, was, was tight. So it was in our best interest to postpone that, and we did. That's giving us an opportunity to look at, look at the project and make potential changes so that it can be in budget. Those changes could be value engineering, they could be a reduction in scope, they could be strategic changes to the period of performance for the construction, it could be material choice changes, good, better, and best, as well as supplemental funding, which is likely that my recommendation will be to approach council and request some supplemental funding, perhaps not for the, the full engineer estimate, but a targeted amount. So that's a, that's a work in progress. Timeframe, we, as recently as last week, we actually re-engaged, the consultant asked them to reach out to their cost estimators and also reach out to some suppliers to, to see what, what the industry is seeing for contractor availability, material availability, et cetera. So currently, the current thought process is to bid in early fall, early, or late fall, early winter, maybe October timeframe, and, and get bids back in plenty of time for material lead times and strategic billing occupancy, so the construction would happen immediately after ice went out in the spring.
Kyle, just to add, working back from that target, we would then anticipate coming back to the council with an ordinance with a request and a recommendation on the scope and the final budget, likely in September.
So I'm trying to remember the, it's on. Wow, I've never had this problem before, shall I sit close to it? For some reason, I, I thought, I thought some of this stuff was ongoing right, right now, that we were doing some things while the sports center was closed during last year, but that, that wasn't, was that not happening?
I believe that the maintenance department, I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec Department did take the opportunity through their operating budget and other means to accomplish a lot of, I don't want to say deferred maintenance, but, but items, and Mr. Carmichael's here, and he can speak to that. But as far as the, the capital project scope goes, that was packaged up into one bid-ready document that would all be accomplished by contractors, so that was, those big portions, and I'll rattle off a few of them, which were complete locker room makeovers, including plumbing and fixtures, painting all of the arena walls, the mezzanine ceiling, that popcorn ceiling, which has been a focus of our, our angst and, and analysis due to the cost estimate that we're, that we're, that we're looking at that.
Did this include all the exterior doors, or is that a different?
Correct. All of the exterior doors for significant, significant cost, as well as front entry and foyer renovation for that customer experience and availability of Parks Department. And as I mentioned in the beginning, it does not include work to the, to the conference room, and that's something that's on our five-year CIP later as a, as a projected project.
Okay. So there's, there's a very small window of opportunity to have the sports center be closed for work, and that would be ice going out, and then summer, if those come back, like home shows and things like that. Is it like have to be done within a month, or would we be maybe not having the space be utilized for some things during the summer months?
That will be a part of our strategy, to, to limit the burden to the facility and to limit the costs, so we can put any restrictions we want to in our contract provisions, and, and essentially, we'll just, we either, you may have to pay for them. A good example, you know, what we were trying to accomplish this year was a certain, we identified painting of the walls, for example, or the exterior walls, we said that this needed to be done within this timeframe, and then site control, you needed to relinquish it in a safe condition for, I want to say, the 4H group that was coming in, as followed with another thing. So we, we can't put those contract provisions in and require accommodations, and generally, that's up to us, and it can, we just may have to pay for it, or not. That's part of the strategy and thinking that we'll have to do. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. You know, it's quite a difference between 1.5 million and 2.2, 700,000, 50% higher. Was there any things added that made the cost go up, or was it just unusually low estimate? Like even 1.5 million?
Excellent question, Councilmember Carey. We asked ourselves that question, we asked our design team that question. We, you know, we started this off with, with an analysis and a rough order of magnitude cost estimate. Using, using the original cost estimate, we appropriated the 1.5 million to accomplish that set of scope. We went through the design phase and the design process. If you ask me, was there some scope creep, if you will? We did not add anything. The, the intended scope, as approved by council through the appropriating ordinance, is exactly the scope that we designed. Cost adders that we could identify that were in our control, perhaps some scope creep, we identified, a good example is, you know, there are six locker rooms there, we had four scheduled for repair and replacement, and we said, well, now's the time to do them all, so we added two more. Certainly, that doesn't, that doesn't account for, you know, $700,000 or that type of increase. The, the ceiling, as I noted earlier, is a, an area of consternation. It's, it does not provide a functional change, right? The doors will, the foyer work will, the showers will, but the, the ceiling is, it's, it's got cobwebs, it's dirty, it's fallen apart, it needs to be replaced. The material choices we're looking at right now, we've asked our consultant to reach out to several manufacturers to identify good, better, best options, if you will. It appears we may have chosen best, best for durability, best for sound attenuation, et cetera. So there, there may be some, some of those reasons. And then a large portion on the, on the professional cost estimate, the estimate that we, that we got was produced by a professional cost estimating firm in Anchorage. They identified, I want to say, they called it unique market conditions with a significant adder because of the, the situation that we're in. Steel prices, conduit availability, combined, combined with, you know, our, our windows of, of construction that we required based on building use. So there's a lot of moving parts that we're trying to figure out what caused that, and that's going to be my job to make a recommendation back to, to the administration and working with Stephanie, and then make a recommendation back to council on how to, how to move forward.
You know, I'm accustomed to a change order on projects that, so that, I hope this isn't a change order in some ways. However, my major thing is I'm not further stepping across accurately than lower, so it looks better, but then we do change orders. And so again, I appreciate what everyone's doing, and this is the difficult time I'm like, but we're, but then just concern to see that large amount, although I very much support improvements in support.
Should we move on? The next one is City Hall HR Office Sound Control. This is kind of a small project here at the, at City Hall. As folks have kind of, we haven't moved too many offices recently, but we've never really done a good job of ensuring that the HR office has adequate sound, sound control for confidentiality reasons. So a pretty minor project that, that will have, that's much needed. Downtown Tree Purchase, as you have all noted, our downtown Aldatna is looking gorgeous with all of the trees and other beautification efforts that have gone, gone through. This was, you know, this was a bit process where we awarded to a local landscaping firm to procure and install, sorry, no, just procure. I believe our, our Parks Department did the installation, is that correct? Yep. So good team effort, but may or may not have been stored at an airport building for your The next one is, is an ongoing project, APDS Discharge Permit Renewal. This is the big kahuna for our discharge permit that we've been working with a, or a Earth Sciences Consultant, HDR. Quite a bit of dollars that we've, we've spent on, on this endeavor, and we're nearing the completion, we're nearing the completion of our study and report phase. And so we've, we've gone through several rounds of working with DEC. We went through two years of sampling, both of the receiving waters and of our effluent both of the receiving waters and of our effluent. We've done extensive laboratory analysis, and it all resulted in a, in a report that requests the use of site-specific criteria in establishing our discharge limits. And that report is, is now gone through several revisions with DEC, with the city, and with our consultant, and is with DEC for their transmission to EPA. So the good news is, we, I think we've adequately answered and responded to all the DEC's comments, questions, and concerns. We've been working excellently with DEC and their team, and so the next phase will be DEC approaching EPA and seeing what they, what they think about it.
My question, of that $423,000, is that mainly toward salaries worked on, and/or are parts of that simply fees for applying for a permit?
Good question, Councilman Carey. A little bit of everything. A significant portion of it went to laboratory analysis and testing of the, of the waters that we, that we sampled. Probably, you know, half or so of it was consulting fees that did go to professional services to assist us with, with the process. Equipment, some equipment purchases and other such things.
Which is definitely something I'd guess you'd pay a fee for the permission.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's to help fund their agency.
The next project you guys are probably aware of, it's something we talked about recently, hydrant analysis and repair. We're systematically getting a handle on the status of all of our hydrants in the city. We've already purchased three brand-new hydrants. We've purchased about $5,000 in repair parts. We've purchased a piece of equipment and tools that'll enable us to, to make some repairs. So we're, that's an ongoing process in our utility department.
Last time this came up, we were talking about the staff looking into the option of painting those or kind of refreshing them because they're looking pretty in need of some love right now. Does this incorporate that, or were you guys able to find a way to do that and pull that in under an operating budget rather than needing capital funding to do that?
This does not incorporate a painting program or effort at this point. We did have some internal discussion and research on the painting issue that we discussed at the meeting. We did some research, identified some programs in Anchorage that do allow homeowners to do some of that. They spec a certain paint and program and policy for doing it. We didn't conclude our analysis and what it, what it may mean to our community and how we might be able to implement something like that, so that's still on the docket. It's something that we're aware of and still, still considering.
Okay, thank you.
Onto the last page here, Slottin Creek Park, paving trails and sidewalk. You'll note this when we get to our five-year CIP as well. This is a DOT and public facilities project. This is their ATAP program where we applied for a grant, and were told we were awarded the grant nearly two years ago. We just recently, I want to say last, go ahead, Stephanie, you're up.
It was John's birthday last week, and as a belated birthday gift this week, we received the grant paperwork, the first draft from the state of Alaska for the two projects that we had been awarded, the CTP, which is the readout paving, and then the ATAP, which is the pedestrian-focused trail paving. So those documents are now in our possession as of this week for the first time, and we're so excited to review those, to get back to the DOT with our comments and feedback. As for the timeline about what that means moving forward, to be determined.
Yeah, still on, still a DOT-administered project, so they will dictate the timeline for design and construction. So I think Vice Mayor Parker said something about in-house, keeping it in-house and paying, making sure they're staying paid and busy. So, but we're excited to have progress on those projects because they are important community projects to us. One thing I wanted to note is the budget amount identified, both on this document and on the five-year CIP, are preliminary, and they have not been updated since our, we just received those, those draft agreements, and those agreements are not executed, obviously, yet. So we'll update the cost figures once we can confirm the city match, if any. Stephanie just touched on the Readout Smithway, that's the companion project, not ATAP, but CTP, Community Transportation. It will require local match, potentially require a local match. We did ask for and receive a local match waiver through an application on that, but as I just noted, to be determined on, on city contributions. Utility rate study is something that just, kind of just came through. We applied for funding to conduct a five-year financial plan for the utility department, looks at capital planning, looks at rates, looks at affordability, things of that nature. We did score high enough on the intended use plan to achieve principal forgiveness, so we still needed to apply, formally apply for the loan. There will be a resolution before you in the near future that addresses that, but the, the plan is for principal forgiveness, so the loan will be forgiven. And so it essentially would be a grant.
Quick question. So I would assume that, it sounded like, based off of our last meeting, potentially would we be putting together policies and procedures for certain utility expansion, whether that's outside city limits or inside city limits? That financial plan would maybe take those into account? Any policies and procedures for what that ends up looking like?
Absolutely. Excellent comment. The last one, wastewater to let minor improvements, this is, this is kind of a holdover project. During the blower and clarifier mega project, we identified a number of improvements that needed to take place, some of which were outside of the scope of the original appropriation, and so we held them aside and came back to council for a, an appropriation of, I think it was about $130,000 to accomplish those, that particular set of work. And we've, we've done maybe half of it, and so it's still, still ongoing. Hopefully, we'll complete that project, those series of projects this, this year, so.
Kyle, I'd like to interject. So we wanted to spend more time in the work session telling you about, giving you the status update on current projects, because part of our kind of analysis and putting together a new plan is also looking at our existing capacity, and that involves what do we have currently that's ongoing. Projects might have been funded three years ago, but that we're actively now engaged in. And so appreciated that Kyle put this together with, with his department so that we could show you all the projects that had recently been completed, but also give you a sense of what they're still working on. As then we transition to the.
Can, before we transition, I wanted to ask Eric if he had any questions before we moved on. Are you still there, Eric? Okay, let's move on.
Great. Kyle, I'd suggest the sports center one we touched on, we've listed it here without a dollar amount, and recognizing that that will be brought back independently for the council, maybe focusing on the other new projects or the modifications as we run through the draft proposal.
Sounds good. Real quick, I'll give a very brief, looking around the room, I think most folks here are up to speed on, on just capital planning and the process at the city. I'll give a 30-second kind of quick overview. The five-year CIP is a planning document, it's a long-range planning document, as opposed to the capital budget. Capital budget each year is a, is a list of projects in a dollar amount that we pass an ordinance and actually appropriate funding to accomplish those particular projects. That capital budget, a lot of times, is built based on other planning documents and immediate needs that may come up, like a pothole. So we look to the five-year CIP to, to establish that, that capital budget. And in previous, recent previous years, the first year of the five-year CIP, we have utilized as, as the capital budget, and that would be our intent this year as well, is to look to the first year of the five-year CIP to turn around and bring it in front of council as this year's capital budget, to accomplish those projects. So the, the five-year CIP process is, it begins basically, coincides with the operating budget procedures. Department heads all get a timeline for their operating budget and capital, CIP submissions and discussions. We issue an email, I send an email to all department heads identifying, you know, existing CIP, requesting feedback on modifications, changes, additions. Department heads that participate with boards and commissions schedule a meeting with their boards and commissions that I attend, where we go over the existing five-year CIP, as well as proposed projects from those different boards and commissions that, that they identify from, from their perspective and their expertise. For example, the Parks and Rec Board, based on Andrew's guidance, they, they make comments. John Zorneski with, with the planning commission is, and then I guess myself with Airport Library Board. I don't think I'm missing anybody there besides council. So we develop a draft list, the administration takes a look at it. The five-year CIP, we attempt to balance, like Stephanie said, manpower, funding availability, the city's resources, as well as, you know, the different sectors of our community. So what we don't want to do is have, you know, five airport projects that need significant funding and neglect some, some other areas, or not have the ability to, to fund or manage, you know, certain projects. The other, another good example is pre-planning, things that we know that are going to need to be funded, and taking care of a roof is a good example. You know, potholes are harder, but we do see streets that are, that are falling apart that we know that we need to get on our radar, that are going to need to be addressed before, before they become an emergency, or like a roof. So I guess that was more than, more than 30 seconds for my lead-in. Any questions on this CIP process or capital, capital budgeting?
Sort of process. You've just gone through 21, again, very good projects, a huge amount of work. We've got these. Do you anticipate an increase in staff, to, assuming each of these are approved, and again, in the timeline, will this be able to be done with current staff?
Thank you, Councilman Carey. I think the projects we outlined in FY '22 are ones that we would reasonably anticipate accomplishing with, if we can get the utility manager position filled and the building official filled. Kyle will not have to be doing those two roles as well as his other full-time responsibilities. So no additional staff? No, this would be what we would target within our current team.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
So the first two projects, as Stephanie noted, and as we talked about briefly, are DOT-administered projects, those are the, we do anticipate a local match amount that may or may not be required as we work those agreements and get them executed. So we've identified those simply as a, more from the funding perspective, to make sure that we're aware of a significant expenditure that may or may not be required of the city. Downtown parking improvements, I spoke about this earlier, and we called it the Aspen Acres Parking Lot. Council can choose to call it what they, what they wish, but this is, this is identifying about a $250,000 expenditure that may be required to address the downtown parking and event parking issues that we currently experience.
So under the model that you're pursuing, we would bear the capital costs of improving that land, but we would have a lease agreement or some kind of contractual object there to guarantee access, public access to that parking lot?
Correct. I'll let Stephanie in.
Yeah, Councilmember Charleston. So we're exploring the concept of a long-term lease, a 20- or 30-year lease at no cost potentially, where that landowner would give permission for the city to improve the land and then maintain it for public use for parking and other similar events. That lease agreement would, will come before the council, for the council to decide. But because we're kind of planning and doing the due diligence for those efforts and have engaged in conversations back and forth, we didn't want to neglect to identify a potential expenditure if we're successful and the council approves entering into that kind of arrangement. So we've included it here, potentially a bit prematurely, not yet having an agreement that's come before the council or been really considered by the landowner, really just positive conversations back and forth about goals.
Was the option to just purchase that land outright ever explored with them? I don't know if they'd be willing to potentially sell it. That way, we don't have to potentially come back and give them a lot more money in 30 years to keep having access to that?
We didn't explore that. I don't know that these particular landowners would be interested in that option, and I think really our, in our exploration of parking solutions, we really hadn't been really exploring additional purchase of city land either. We'd been looking for partnerships, opportunities. It wasn't something we were actively pursuing, but I don't believe that that would be something that this particular property owner was interested in.
Okay, thank you. So the increase in cost would be, I'm assuming that's going to be a paved area, maybe with lighting, drainage? Is that, right now, it's a massive snow storage area. So what's the plan with that?
The, the plan is to, is to work with a civil engineering consultant for parking lot and drainage improvements, and a registered landscape architect for landscape improvements, and to find the balance of maximizing parking spaces, yet still providing some green space or usable space for picnics, or a vendor, or something of that nature. So the conceptual, which is in progress, and I think that will, anything that we develop, what we develop from a conceptual and preliminary engineering would potentially be an exhibit or a appendancy in front of council, should any agreement with a property owner be developed. Obviously, the council would be the ones reviewing and approving that, and so that conceptual plan or design would be a part of that agreement. That's something the landowner clearly would be interested in, to make sure that they're in concurrence with what we plan to do from an infrastructure standpoint. But I can tell you, you know, accommodating pedestrians, getting cars in there, providing some type of a green space, as well as drainage. Lighting, I noted you said lighting, right now, just to be cost-effective, we've not considered putting illumination in there, recognizing that there's, there's pretty good lighting from the, from the adjacent buildings and from the highway frontage.
Just food for thought, lighting is helpful in areas where there's lots of places to park cars and potentially not well-lit areas, but in the middle of there.
At the very least, I'm a big fan of attempting to future-proof an improvement and, you know, with conduit and run so that, so that things could happen later. But we'll, we'll take a hard look at that, and, and, you know, the cost of improvements is not, like, like City Manager Queen said, it's not fully identified yet. We're, we're in that early phase where we're trying to find out what do we need, what will it cost, and how can we accomplish our overall objective, which is improving parking in our downtown and event areas?
In, in the interest of time, we're only through the first year, there's four years to go, plus the utility fund, and I'd like to have this done by 10 to 6, so we can take a break before the council meeting.
I will, I will speed it up, because I, I too want to spend most of the time on utility things, so, just kidding. The good news is SRS, major maintenance supplemental funding, we already talked about that. That's something that we're working on diligently at the administrative level, and we'll bring back in front of council with a plan of attack. Storefront Improvement Program, this is kind of an annual supplemental funding for the facade improvement program. The $15,000 noted here would accommodate two grant awards. And definitely speak up and let me know if you have a question on these as I, as I go through them. West Readout Property Master Plan, this is a new one. You'll see in the column that says type, it kind of identifies if these projects are new to the five-year CIP, an ongoing repetitive project, or have been somewhat modified, either by changing years or dollar amounts. So this $50,000 West Readout Property Master Plan is, is the first phase of an analysis and public engagement for the conceptual planning of a recreational or cultural area at the end of West Readout. It's a massive 80-acre parcel that the city owns and has very interesting history and, and opportunity and existing use, primarily from fishermen that are, that are just parking and trampling back there. So this phase is primarily outreach, community, community meetings, likely hiring a consultant to assist with, with that process, to make sure that we're approaching this project as appropriate as we can. The next project, Riverview Park Green Space, this is a small park at Park on Riverview. Currently, there's a tiny little parking spot. Currently, there's a tiny little parking spot and play equipment, not really any lawn or green space for playing. This would get kids and patrons off the street and give them basically a green space to play. Farnsworth Fall Protection Replacement, $45,000. Fall Protection, you wouldn't know it, but is a big business. It's expensive and very specific on what needs to be at a playground. This is a project that is beneficial to Farnsworth Park by installing all-new rubber mulch there, but the existing wood mulch that is there, what is usable, is slated to move over to Solotana Creek Park where it's diminishing and it will give us additional years of use with the wood mulch at Solotana Creek Park before it too has to be replaced. The next project, HR Manager Office Improvements, we talked about that briefly before. This would be the, as I noted, this is FY22, the first year. Our plan would be to include $25,000 in the capital budget to actually accomplish those sound mitigation and privacy improvements in the HR office here at City Hall. And then the final one, Mechanic Shop Design Study Report, $20,000. This is our mechanic shop at the end of Funny River Road, which has a leaking roof that had insulation and other parts and pieces added to it over the years. We can't, we can't address the deficiencies of that building without analyzing the loading to the roof, particularly the dead loads that we've added that are now soaking wet and compromised. So, kind of a two-phase or two objectives here, one to identify repairs and improvements to that building, and then secondly, alternatives and options to repairs of that building. Is there a more cost-effective way to address our needs in regards to our mechanic shop? One of which is the, is the long-term option to relocate to the Arbor, Arbor Street Administrative side.
Kyle, I was just going to mention, that ties into the first two projects listed in FY25, which are the maintenance worm storage and the mechanic shop. Long-term, the city identified it would be preferential to relocate where our mechanics and welders are at the end of Funny Road to kind of co-locate them with our maintenance shop on Arbor. That project, unfortunately, because it hasn't been funded, it gets kind of kicked back into year five as these documents get updated. When Kyle mentioned that we've got some potentially significant roof deficiencies of our current shop, we discussed the idea of this analysis so that rather than just putting good money into a potentially old building that may not have many years left, at the same time, we could get a more thorough analysis to give us a good sense of really the remaining life of that building. It may help us judge the urgency with which the potential relocation or some other alternative may need to come into existence, so.
So, those are the projects that we've identified in FY22, the near-term projects. As we go later in the year in the five-year planning document, they become probably, a good way to say it, is less precise and less prioritized. Some projects you'll see are perennial, end-of-the-list-type projects because they, there's some gravity and benefit to having a project on a document that has been approved by our governing board or council as a community priority. So, say there is a grant opportunity for housing developments in rural areas and the extension of Fireweed Street is eligible, and we can say, yes, that's a community priority. It's been identified by our council. However, we don't realistically have an intent to appropriate $3 million to extend Fireweed Street. We recognize that it would be incredibly beneficial to have another collector street that connects through our city, as well as unlocking and making available, you know, further residential development areas. So, I'll just, and another quick reminder that FY22 is potentially intended to be our capital, our capital budget, which would come to council as its own ordinance and appropriation in subsequent meetings. I'll also remind you that in tonight's council meeting, Resolution 2021-032 contains this list as you have before you to be adopted as our five-year CIP. So, that will be pending at the council meeting. So, comments, concerns, and amendments to this spreadsheet would occur at the council meeting.
I ask a quick question on the FY22 Riverview Park Green Space and one we haven't talked about yet, Ark Lake Improvements. I know we've talked about both of these today and in the past. Just a question on the Ark Lake Improvement seemed like something that potentially would be useful in FY22, particularly with the popular Ark Lake wintertime events. But obviously, it's, you know, July already, maybe impossible to expand any parking before winter. Just a question about the timing on Ark Lake Improvements as there was significant sort of backup, I guess, in the winter months for events out there?
I'll say, you're going to see some work done this fall, but we're going to be doing it in-house. So, Scotty and the maintenance crew have an excavator rented. They're going to be doing some ditching and drainage work. They're going to be doing some expansion. We kind of met to outline that footprint of the parking expansion, so we're going to accomplish some of that work in-house. In thinking about this, Andrew felt like that would give us some additional expansion opportunity for winter parking, particularly this winter. And then in addition, he was comfortable, I think, with FY23 then coming back with the potentially bigger project, really looking at the driveway approach, starting to think about trail system there, and maybe more formalizing the parking and expanding the beach area. So, I do agree that I think it's a priority, and we thought this two-pronged approach would allow us to get some work done right now for people to see that change, potentially tackling a bigger project next year.
Okay. Yeah, that makes more sense then. I was just wondering if those two maybe made sense to be flip-flopped. I know they're not the same dollar amount at all, but I didn't know if a green space at Riverview was possible to fit into 22 as that obviously ends in June of 23. So, yeah, but that makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Okay, jumping into FY23, and I'll pick up the speed a little bit. Reconstruct Marydale Avenue, Phase 1 of 2. You'll see the companion Phase 2 in the following year. This is, you know, Marydale is heavily used with high-traffic counts and needs to be on our radar for reconstruction. We continue to search for grants and outside funding opportunities because it's going to be an expensive endeavor with the size and amount of asphalt and also our desire to make improvements to our pedestrian facilities. So, Phase 1 is from the Kenai Spur Highway all the way to Cobuck, big chunk of it, includes six-foot sidewalk on the south side. I will note that the Planning Commission and Mr. Zarneski advocate for large six-foot sidewalks on both sides. That's something that we'll need to continue to take a look at from a funding and constructability perspective with utilities, et cetera. Karen Street Park Upgrades, $200,000. This is a project that's been existing, concrete slabs, soccer wall, BMX, landscaping at the skate park. So, general improvements to that park at the end of Karen Street, which is the down Marydale, east of, east Marydale. SRSC Conference Center Expansion, this is the conference room area, and this is the design phase. We've identified about $400,000 for the design of the conference room expansion, the pre-function area. There'll be new restrooms. This is something that we looked at previously and identified the broad scope of work. This would anticipate the design phase of that. The following year, you'll see we have targeted about $5 billion based on a cost estimate that we received for the actual expansion and construction of that. Again, I'll note that as a planning document, as we get kind of further out, they become less precise and again, less prioritized, right? So, Ark Lake Improvements, we already talked about, that's better parking, improving the beach area and roughing in a new trail. As City Manager Queen noted, there will be some parking and tree removal improvements that will take place this year from, due to our maintenance department's work. Sohi Lane Street and Storm drain repair. This is a street that is continuing to degrade for a big reason why is due to the storm drain failure. Every year, we seem to spend a lot of time trying to make the breakup drain at that, on that street, and it's been identified as a need to make significant repairs. Outdoor Sand Storage Facility, this is a metal and fabric structure. You'll see these quite common in agricultural settings and all over Alaska and DOT. It's basically a fabric, a fabric covering that allows us to store sand outdoors, out of the weather and rain and snow, without fighting tarps and tires and other such things. It keeps it from clumping up. It goes into our sanders easier and allows us to more effectively use it from year to year, leftovers. Been on the maintenance wishlist for quite some years. Downtown Wayfinding Sinage, this is a project that we've talked about in the past and is similar to projects we've accomplished in the past, such as the signage that you see, both the Gateway signage, Welcome to Solotanas, as well as the Centennial Park and Solotana Creek Park signage. This is an extension of that, and this is wayfinding signage such as destination signs, you know, library, museums, et cetera.
Would this include Unity Trail signage for going through the residential district?
I'm going to let Mr. Zarneski answer that question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chilton. Yes, it certainly could. It could identify any number of activities, attractions within the community. As Mr. Cornell indicated, it could be a library, a museum, Unity Trail, it could be Salteshi Trails. So, it would, the goal would be to try to get some signage up so that as people are passing by in their cars, they would see that there are these different attractions within the city of Solotana, hopefully get out and spend a little time here. Thank you.
Salteshi still is outside the city.
It is, but the other side of the street's in.
Now, the next project is our webpage update. This is just an attempt to keep up with technology and to just have the best public-facing webpage we can for our community and for our visitors. Moving into FY2024, Reconstruct Marydale, again, companion project. This would be from the Cobuck intersection down to the Sohi area and possibly pass it, again, addressing a sidewalk. Now, we've got the companion project to the design of the Conference Center Expansion. We've targeted $5 million based on that cost estimate. Real quick, the scope would entail a complete demolition of the existing one. We looked at reusing the existing roof line and expansion, and it wasn't conducive to what's best for a conference center and conference room, which is a higher ceiling without interior columns and a better geometric shape, more square instead of long and rectangular. Replace Playground Equipment at Solotana Creek Park, $300,000. Playground equipment is a nightmare to procure and install, according to Kyle, maybe not to Andrew, but this identifies the need. Surprisingly, I want to say that it has been a decade since the community rallied and built that through volunteer labor. It's held up great. It has suffered its fair share of vandalism and just wear and tear. The Parks Department has done a great job with maintaining it and repairing it as needed, but we do recognize that within the next five years, we're going to need to spend some money on Solotana Creek Park Playground. Moving into FY2025, Stephanie mentioned the maintenance worm storage facility and the next project, the mechanic shop at Arbor Avenue. These are longstanding needs. This would consolidate operations to one facility. We would still maintain a presence out at the end of Funny River Road where our boneyard is, which has laid-out equipment and spare hydrants and light poles and other such things, or big sand piles, but it would allow our heavy, heavy equipment and maintenance to occur at the same place the rest of the maintenance efforts are conducted at Arbor Avenue. Centennial Campground Road Paving, a perennial project under the type column, you'll see it says modified, simply because it continues to get bounced back every single year. Good example of a project where we, I've applied for grants from a utility perspective to try and get water and sewer down there. Pavement would be significantly advantageous to our maintenance department, particularly in a rainy year when they have to blade that due to traffic with motorhomes and just, you guys all know the amount of traffic that Centennial Park gets and our visitors and residents alike use. It takes an enormous amount of maintenance effort. So, having a paved road would be beneficial to park users as well as the general fund in our operations, but it's a big dollar amount for a project that is ways out there, unless we can find grant funding for it. The next project is actually really, is a great project, too. This is a new project that we've placed on the five-year CIP. This is a Centennial and K Beach area property master plan. The city owns 35-plus-or-minus acres adjacent to Centennial Park and K Beach, such as the ball fields and the rodeo and its integration with the sports center. We've talked in the past about the fieldhouse recognition is that some, a planning document, a planning approach to what's the long-term opportunities in that area as it pertains to city property. So, I don't believe that the, any of the planning documents to date really addressed specific needs for that area.
I'll just, this is a project that John Zarneski suggested, and I think some of you may be familiar with a conversation that probably is decades old as to the highest and best use of that land. By putting it on the plan, we're not indicating a preference for change necessarily. I think more so we're recognizing that our, we may believe now that our commercial developable land is finite, and I think the city, you'll be hearing more from John and the planning department about zoning. We might be taking opportunities to look at redeveloping property, like we've talked about with that riverfront project. This presents another opportunity to take a look at land and really plan for future best needs of the community. So, I think it's a good project to be in kind of where it's at on the five-year plan, recognizing that at some point, it may be important for the city to bring the community together to look at, look at that area of town. Kyle, can I, I'll just transition. Really, the last thing we added on this page, those priorities not yet assigned, this is kind of a new category. These are projects that had been talked about. They're not assigned a specific dollar amount. They're not assigned a specific year. The benefit to us of having a category like this is that when particularly federal opportunities may come forward for grant projects, if we were approached by Senator Murkowski's office as we were recently, or Congressman Young, it gives us the ability to pick and choose projects from a list and send forward something that we think might be most competitive based on that funding availability. And traditionally, we would pull things from the capital five-year plan, but there may be other priorities of the councils that aren't somewhere in these five years that you still want us to say, if there's an opportunity for funding, green light, you know, forward that request. So, that's kind of what we were envisioning with those projects down at the bottom, is an opportunity for the council to say, yes, these are still things that if funding were available, we would want the administration to pursue. Or if these things don't align with what you would want us to be communicating, those could be amended and then we would have that direction as well. So, that was, that was kind of the point of those.
Before we move to utility, and we only have 10 minutes, I am going to propose an amendment to FY22 at the council meeting to add $15,000 to, for new chairs for council chambers here. When I went to sit down, the handle was broken on the chair I was on. Stephanie mentioned some of these chairs tip, and you're not sure. I think when I was on the council 10 years ago, these chairs, these chairs are old and need to be replaced. So, I will be proposing an amendment to include $15,000 for new council chamber chairs.
So, I don't know if this is something that we want to add to this, but I've been thinking about when I went to the planning and zoning meeting and we were talking about how wide a strip we want for commercial properties, and if we were going to have to change how our commercial strip looked. And I was wondering if there was a way to go back and let's just say, Readout and, well, even Cobuck, I guess, and see how many businesses are in those residential areas, if it's something that we want to really look at. in those residential areas. If it's something that we want to really look at. Because as I drive down some of these streets, I see shingles hanging out, you know, and it's what we used to consider a residential area, but obviously, they're not all residential anymore. And if that might not give us a better idea of how we want to do our commercial strip.
Thank you for that. I think that's something that the Planning Department can look into as they kind of keep an eye on land availability and use. Thank you.
Now, onto the important stuff. Biosolids. Just kidding. Utility five-year CIP, you know, this is, we, we keep this separate. As we've noted before, the utility fund is completely segregated and separate from the general fund, funded entirely by participants and users of, of those facilities. And as such, we, we plan for and spend money on projects separately. Still keeping in mind that these projects need to be accomplished by the same people at the same time to the best end of the city. So the first project, APDS Permit Renewal, and the first project in the following year, FY '23, are both associated with our discharge permit renewal process. The first one, $60,000, is just recognizing the potential need to carry us to completion of site-specific criteria and the actual issuance of that permit. And then the $200,000 on, on pH control is the costs to implement pH control of our effluent, which is a part of our request for site-specific criteria, is that we would adjust our pH to a certain number of our effluent, which would then have an impact on, on our discharge limits. So first, first one is more professional services and coordination with EPA and DEC. The second one is actually intended to be infrastructure changes.
Kyle, sorry, just sorry to interrupt, but majority of these projects have already been adopted in previous five-year CIPs. Can you speak to just the two that are new projects?
I can do that.
And then if there were specific questions about any of the other ones?
If you, if you have questions about any of the other ones, please let me know, and I will let you know before 10 till. I will get those answers to you. The, the two new projects, the first one in FY '22, they've been added to the five-year CIP. The other ones are on the existing. Biosolids Dewatering System, we talked a bit previously when I was going over existing projects. The Phase 1 of the Biosolids Dewatering Design Phase that we're in right now, where we're going to identify the technology and equipment that needs to replace our belt filter press. This is the companion project and the Phase 2, where we would anticipate coming back to council and asking for money to complete the design and fund the construction. $600,000. It's a, it's a pretty hefty project, but it is a, it is a process that we cannot, cannot walk away from or, or operate every other day at minimum. So pretty important process down at the plant. The other new project is the UV Disinfection System out there at the year number five. Our, our disinfection system, we used to use chlorine, as many other places did. Many, many years ago, we switched to UV disinfection, which is a superior, a superior disinfection system, both from an operational perspective with handling and safety, but also for, for actual effluent. And I think that the city of Soldatna was a, a forerunner and implemented one of the newer technologies that were available in UV. And it's been a great system for us and has performed outstanding. It's just the technology is aging and getting older, and we have been needing to troubleshoot portions of it. And there is significant improvements that we could implement down there. So it's, it's in year five and out there, but we recognize that, you know, in half a decade or sooner, we're probably going to need to address that disinfection system. So it's a oversized, if you've seen the SteriPen camping-type pen, it's a industrial version of that. Pretty slick. And that's, those are the two new projects that, that aren't on the existing five-year CIP. That was the turquoise handout that, that I provided to council. It is on our website and was adopted last year by, by council. Last thing I'll note in, in my allotted time is that, is that last year, FY '21, we, we didn't have a large list of capital projects to be identified in our capital budget, and that's because of the CARES Act monies. And you'll see that on, on the adopted five-year CIP, where we had, you know, 1.2 million in various COVID-19 resiliency projects. And then, and then just two mid-year appropriations, which were the storefront and, and the 1.5 for the SRSC Major Maintenance. I hope I wasn't too quick.
A quick question on the existing and probably, you know, very long-term, even past '26, South Fireweed Construction. I would assume if we put a road right down the middle of town, that we would probably have a need to put, like, sewer and water under it? But that doesn't seem like enough money to do so.
That's a good question. That number, I think we developed based on some takeoffs and some existing projects that connected to some of the side streets that connect in there. I can relook at that. The good news is, with its allocation in '26, we'll have ample opportunity to revise that and make sure that it's a real number. But you're, you're correct. It is, just like when you go up to the existing projects with Marydale, as we, as we repair and refurbish Marydale, we want to take care of any underground work that needs to, needs to occur before we make those service and service transportation improvements. So you'll see them in companion years, like '23 and '24. So that's, you're entirely correct. That is why that's there. And that number, your, your spidey sense is probably accurate, that that's probably a low number.
Kyle, the other thing about that road is though, it runs north-south. Most of the east-west streets are already built out. So this would really, you know, there may be some small connections needed, but it may be that, that, you know, most of the properties are already served with water and sewer. But definitely something to look at again.
Yeah.
The only, last comment is, thank you for maybe your flexibility in how we presented it this year. I want to reassure you that the same amount of analysis and thoughtfulness and process went into kind of identifying these projects and bringing them forward. We do still anticipate to turn it into this document that looks, with the graphics and the photos and the more thorough descriptions, because of challenges, you know, last year and our, our time constraints, and then this year, coming out of all that work. We wanted to bring you this list. We still intend to do the, the nice document. It would be published on the website, but we wanted to bring the list first and allow the council to have an opportunity to make amendments, make changes, and then we'll follow up after the fact, after it's finalized and adopted with, with the document. So historically, it'll look the same, and, and thanks for allowing us some flexibility in how we presented it this year. Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker.